Good afternoon and welcome to the September 17th meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
I'm here.
Mayor Stone.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed session agenda and are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have one public comment. Mr. Klein?
Wow, there's so many other people to choose from today.
Is this on? There we are. I'll bet there's a few you wish there were. I'm here to speak on closed session item CS3, which is real property negotiations for 42670 Juniper Street. Would certainly be more transparent if we listed what that facility is that's known as the Marietta Equestrian Park. That would be in the spirit of transparency, in my opinion. So not knowing what those negotiations are going to be in those deliberations.
Mr. Klein, can you hold off for a second, please? Madam City Clerk, I believe that I probably need to leave the dais for this conversation as I win the 500 feet of this project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, that would be...
Thank you. I'm going to let Mayor Pro Tem Warren take over.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Please proceed, Mr. Klein.
So I'm here, thank you. So I'm here to encourage you, if in your deliberations you are going to finalize any contracts, I would suggest that you hold off in doing that. And I do that because at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the Los Alamos Hills Sports Park, which later in the agenda tonight, you're going to choose an ad hoc subcommittee. You know, you've all acknowledged that soccer is in very high demand here in the city. We've all acknowledged and we know that the expenses and the cost to develop Los Alamos Hills Sports Park into anything are unknown, and we've expended quite a bit of money. We're facing a $7.4 million deficit. In about 2017, the city spent $2.3 million to acquire the Equestrian Center. If you were to go out there today, you will see that it is dilapidated and blighted. In fact, I'm confident that if it were a private facility, there would be a code enforcement notice and because it is a public nuisance. So, you know, I just don't want the chance that the Equestrian Center may be an alternative for short-term or even long-term much-needed soccer fields. I don't want to see the city enter into a long-term agreement with a tenant that may preclude the ability to do that. And that'll wrap up my discussion because I don't want to get too far off topic on soccer fields in Los Alamos. So again, just want to encourage you, whatever that is on the agenda, to consider that there may be alternatives, that we wouldn't want to box ourselves in on a long-range contract with either a tenant at the Equestrian facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed session items?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The City Council will now go into closed session on CS1. City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to paragraph 2 or 3 of subdivision D of section 54956.9, because there is significant exposure to litigation in one case. City Council will also conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4, because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in one case. City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.8, to enable the City Council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding that certain real property at 427, pardon me, 42670 Juniper Street, APNs 906250018, 906250019, and 906670004. City's real property negotiators, city manager, assistant city managers, and city attorney will seek direction from the City Council regarding price and terms for this property. City Council will also conduct a closed session pursuant to paragraph 2 or 3 of subdivision D of section 54956.9, because there is significant exposure to litigation in one case. And finally, the City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 54957B, to continue the process for the future appointment of an employee to the position of city manager.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we're going to recess to closed session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM for the regular meeting. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the September 17th regular meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Attorney, please provide your report from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on five items. The first one was to confer with council regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2 or 3. In this item, the council was updated, no reportable action. The second item was to, again, confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, but this time it was pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4. The council was considering whether to initiate litigation and did unanimously authorize litigation against the owners of 25285 Adams Avenue. The third item was to confer with real property negotiators relating to property located at 42670 Juniper Street. On this item, the council was updated, no reportable action, but I would like to note that the mayor recused herself and was not in the room for this closed session. The fourth item was to, again, confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2 or 3. In this item, again, the council was updated, no reportable action. The final item was a public employee appointment pursuant to government code section 54957B, regarding the process of the future city manager appointment. The council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Carl and remain standing for the invocation led by Pastor Chris Decnetal from Promise Lutheran Church. Carl, who are you?
Right.
There you go. Hi, hello. I was looking here.
Stand, face the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and moral.
In light of the recent events with our, trying to shoot our president, past president, twice, I just thought this might be an opportunity to remind all of us the great city that we live in and the wonderful people that we have up here serving us, and that they're not our enemies, but people we should respect from fire, police, and our council. And I want to thank you for all your service, because I know there's very long hours, and shooting you is not an option, but rather respect and dignity. And we can disagree and still walk away as friends and members of this city. I've been here for 22 years, and I've seen it grow from, you know, there was just plywood around here, and horses were all over this place when it started, and now look at us and the growth that we've had, and thank you for overseeing that. And I hope you feel the same about the council that we have, and thank them for their hard work, as well as our police and fire. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, you've got three people that like you, the rest don't. So let us pray. Heavenly Father, we call upon your presence into this meeting. We ask you to be here today to calm all hearts and minds, to allow us to articulate our feelings properly and appropriately, and to put peace and love in the forefront of all that we do for our great city. I ask you to continue to send your spirit upon these council members and fire and police, that you may strengthen them and their leadership as they continue to govern this city, watch over us, and protect us from the evil that would want to destroy us. And so, Lord, we give you thanks and praise for these members, and ask you to pour out your spirit both upon them and upon us, the members of this city, and upon this meeting this evening. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys, for your service.
Thank you, Pastor Chris. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Councilmember Holliday?
Are we...
We're going to do that under consent.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind, council member.
Okay, great. Seeing none, I need a motion in a second, please. What do I feel like I... Great. A motion by Councilmember Lavelle, second by Councilmember DeForest.
Motion, please, Madam and Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the city manager administrative update, the city manager administrative updates is an opportunity for the city manager to provide community updates, as well as department or commission announcements on current or upcoming projects. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, we will be lighting City Hall up the month of October. The first two weeks, it will be lit pink for breast cancer awareness. The second two weeks of the month, it will be lit up purple, and that's for domestic violence awareness and prostate cancer awareness month. And now, we are going to have Brian Crawford, who's going to give you an update on some of the CSD construction.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. I really appreciate the opportunity to come before the council tonight and give some updates on community services construction. We have a lot of stuff going on in the city right now. We're really proud of the fact that recently, just in the past couple of weeks, we've completed the five smaller parks where we're swapping out their playground equipment. The first one here you see is Altamirrieta Park, and then we have Firefighters Park. We've got a really nice fire-themed set there now in place of the Turtles. Sorry about the Turtles. We also have East Gate Park. It's one off of Whitewood. It's a really nice colorful set. And then Rancho Acacia's Park, and then Sycamore Park, which is on the far northern boundary of the city that is right next to the 15 freeway. So currently in construction, we have four playgrounds in construction. We've got Monavista Park over by Monavista Elementary School. Got a really nice rocket-themed spaceship playground going in. Palomar Park is having their equipment swapped out as well, and then we'll move on to North Star and then Oak Terrace Park. Coming soon, this slide represents a very busy six months. The next six months are going to be super busy. We've got Townsquare Park Parking Lot and the Monument. Not only is it a parking lot, but it's an entryway monument to our downtown area. It's going to be a really nice pillar with two video boards where we can let the community know what's going on in the city. We'll be bringing that construction contract to council probably next month, mid-month, mid-October. We also have Glen Arbor Dog Park. It's currently in design. We're just finishing up the touches, finishing touches on the design, and then we'll go out to bid for that, and we should be starting that by the end of the year. We also have pickleball courts that are currently in design. We'll be bringing that construction contract back to you in the very near future. We also have tennis court lighting at Calooc's Park. We're going to be lighting those tennis courts. Design is almost done for that. We'll be starting that in the next couple of months. We also, we're waiting for our design team to tell us what lights they're using at Calooc's Parks, because we can use the same lights over at the community center. We're getting a twofer on that one. We also have Los Alamos Hills Sports Park EV station. This is a SCE-designed and constructed project. They do all of the construction. They put all the infrastructure in, the switchgear, everything. They do it all. It's paid for by fees that are passed on to their customers, and all we do is put an EV charger on the pad and turn it on. That's it. It's pretty turnkey. It's a long process to get the design done on that, plus they're waiting on switchgear, so we think that we're going to be ready for construction on that in January. And then, of course, we have our Marietta Children's Library expansion that is in design. We should be wrapping up the design and bid documents in the spring, 2025, and then beginning construction in the summer of 2025, that should say. You can always follow our progress at mariettaca.gov/libraryx. And as always, all residents and staff members can follow all of our progress on all of our projects by going to this URL or snapping that QR code. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering, how many pickleball courts are we going to be getting?
So right now, we have the four pickleball courts at Alderwood in design. We think we're going to be able to do those. We have a design for two at Firefighters. We just need to work out the budgeting. So we're hopeful to do all six.
Fantastic. That is a very hot ticket item, so I'm excited to hear that coming forward. So thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have our Fire Chief Malloy, who has some exciting news to share.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council. If you'd recall, I was here about six months ago, and I told you that the city of Marietta was going to actively pursue fire risk reduction, community status through the Board of Foresters. And to take you back to that presentation I did a little bit, we're very aware of the hardships that our residents are having when it comes to keeping and keeping low-cost fire insurance in our community, and we wanted to do everything we can to help our residents achieve that. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of options that cities and fire departments have that we can do to help. There are two things, though, that we're able, that are identified in the insurance code that we can do. The first is to assist neighborhoods to become fire-wise communities. That's a neighborhood-level protection status that you get through NFPA, and we're working to help some of our communities to do that. But the second is to become recognized as what is determined to be a fire risk reduction community by the Board of Foresters, and that would apply the same level of status over the entire city, so our entire city borders. And in order to do this, well, it always looks better when you make it, and then you put it on a screen, and there's always something like this. But what we have to do is we had to follow the rules that are outlined in the Public Resources Code to apply for this, and it's reserved for communities that meet the best practices for local fire planning. So this doesn't look at how well we put out fires. This looks at how well we work to prevent fires in our city and how we plan our city around fire safety. And it's the only thing that is spelled out in Title 10 of the insurance code that identifies that it will be considered during the rate-making process for insurance for residents. So this is the only thing that we can do as a city specifically to do that. Here's the process. You know, it's a long process to go through. There's lots of steps involved, and I want to draw emphasis to the fact that this was a city effort. This isn't just the fire department that has to do this. We had to work with planning, because one of those you'll see up there is we have to do a subdivision review and determine every place in the city that we have more than 30 homes that are only accessed by one way in and one way out. And we thought that wouldn't be a lot, but it actually turned out to be a lot. So we had to map our city. We had to do a lot of work there, and then we had to work through various different plans. And I'm happy to the report that on June 13th, at a hearing in Sacramento, we were recommended for status as a fire risk reduction community.
Wow.
That status took place on July 1st. We became official. It's a two-year recognition, and then we have to apply again. And what's really great about this is the city of Marietta is the only municipality in Riverside County that has this designation. We're one of only 11 cities in the state of California that has this designation, and there's about 45 municipalities and districts that have it, and 11 of those are cities, and we're one of them. So we're very happy to have this, and we're the only city in Riverside County that now qualifies for rate reduction citywide. So if you live in the city of Marietta, you're qualified for a rate reduction on your insurance. That always begs the question, what kind of rate reduction will that be? This is the sticky point. We've done our part. Now it becomes the responsibility of the insurance companies to recognize this, as they're supposed to, and to give those benefits to our residents. Because of this, we want to share this with our community. We have a whole dedicated part on our webpage that talks about our fire risk reduction community, has all of the certification documents that you will need to provide to your insurance providers to make sure that you're given these rates, and we want to help everybody get this word out there and share it far and wide. And I'm happy to report that I actually found out last Thursday, one of our firefighters that works for us just went through his renewal on his insurance. And at a time when people are calling you and saying, "My insurance went up by 10%, 20%, 30%," his insurance went down by $400 because of this status. So I would like that to be $4,000, but we'll take $400, and we were happy to hear it. And that's the first feedback I've had on this program directly. So with that, I'm open for any questions, and...
I'm looking at my thing here. I don't...
Do you see me?
Hold on a second. I'll go to the floor. Give me a second, Gary. Here we go. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that information. I would consider not, you know, all the stories you hear about people getting dropped from their insurances lately, just not getting dropped is a win in the state of California. Do you know if we could possibly reach out to the major insurance providers and maybe proactively provide that message of we are now one of those 11 cities?
We have to go out through the brokers, and that's something that we've already started is reaching out to our local brokers and talking to them that we have this status and sharing it. And once, you know, once the public gets aware of it, the brokers in the area will realize it as well and point them to this direction. Something we should note is this also should apply to those people that have been removed from the private insurance market and are on the fair plan. This should count for a reduction to that plan as well.
Oh, wow, that's fantastic.
Have you heard of anyone in Marietta being, having their insurance dropped, or...
Absolutely.
Do you think this would allow them to reengage with their previous insurance company to retain that insurance?
We're optimistic, but the insurance companies work based on quotas, and unfortunately, they don't look specifically at the mitigations we put in citywide. We do 14,000 defensible space inspections per year in our city. We can show that. We can show the level of compliance our residents have with the defensible space standards, but insurance companies just don't look at that for us. So this is defined in Title 10 that they have to look at this now. So we're proud of that.
Well, this is great news. Thank you for bringing it to us and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. This is amazing news. And speaking from experience, mine just renewed in September, the beginning of this month, and my insurance company did not know about it, but they knew that there was a link or a database where they could go and check it. And after doing a couple of deep dives, they finally found it. I provided them with a certificate that I downloaded offline on the website, and it did, it is, I should have about $400 to $500 reduction on mine. So I just found that out yesterday.
Let's apply that to more than 30,000 homes in Marietta.
That would be great. So if they, you know, what I'm trying to say is if your insurance doesn't know about it, ask them to look for a database that has that. So that's, you're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember DeForest. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just was wondering if we could have something with a link for easy access, because what I'm hearing a lot is people are getting these fire inspections, and it'd be nice to be able to have that certificate when the fire inspector comes out to give his review of your property. And could we maybe up the link on the website and make it a little bit easier accessible?
We can, we've shared it through our social media. It's on the website. We'll bring that forward, and we're trying to continually message this because we're really proud of it, so...
And thank you for all your hard work and diligence on this, and it's good for our residents, because that's a huge complaint right now in our area, whether in the high or the moderately high fire danger. So thank you so much. And as I looked at the map, I think Marietta's almost all high, moderate now, or...
We have a lot on the west side and east side of our city that live in the very high fire severity zone. The insurance companies are not supposed to use that map to base their quotes on.
But...
I'm using your quotes.
Yes, there we go. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This has been a heavy lift, I know. You want to share how long you've been working on this?
Well, we were, we started the process almost a year ago, and the actual work took about six years to get, excuse me, six months to get everything put together. The good news is, now that we have done the work, when we renew in two years, the lift has been done. So they will, I'm sure, add some new categories that we have to meet, but we have proved that we have already in our city the standards in place that are necessary to receive the certification.
And is there anyone on your team you'd like to recognize?
I absolutely would like to recommend that all of you thank our Fire Marshal Doug Strohsneider, who put in a tremendous amount of work with his team. He ran this whole project. He ran it through, you know, the planning department as well that had to help us with a lot of it. We had GIS support from IT. I mean, it was a big lift for the entire city, and the entire city will benefit because of this.
And knowing Doug as well as I do, he is the detail kind of guy you needed on this project.
Absolutely.
So I will reach out to him myself. I would encourage my colleagues to do the same. I thank you as well.
Thank you.
Chief Malloy, thank you so much to you and your entire team for fighting for the residents of Marietta. Even if it's $400, you know, a year, it's still $400 a year, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief. And lastly, we have our very own Christina Davies, who's going to give you... Broke my microphone. She's going to give you a community update.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council. So normally, I stand up here and I talk a bunch about what's happening in Marietta, but today I decided to switch it up a bit and create a little video. So Kimberly, can you please play the video? That is the end of the video. So if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer. I do want to point out, though, that the bulky item and shredding event that is happening on September 28th is only for Marietta residents.
Great. Thank you, Christina. Any questions?
And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Christina. I just want to add two things. I want to remind everyone that Saturday, October 5th, at the amphitheater, we're doing a human live pink ribbon. It's the launch Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the city also has a city team for the Race for the Cure. You can go to our website and join us, so thank you so much. Moving on to governing body commission and committee board reports. The governing body reports is an opportunity for the city council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, commission committees, and other board meeting attendance. The report should not exceed three minutes, and we'll start with Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. The only thing that I can report out is I did attend the RCHCA meeting, and there's really nothing to report out, although they were very excited. They got a new tractor and spraying system with this year's budget, and they will be able to cover more ground and help with some of the species that are not native. So thank you so much, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lavelle.
I have no updates at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Western Regional Council of Governments a couple of weeks ago, a week and a half ago, and they did their NEXUS study. Actually, I got that backwards. I attended the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, which did their NEXUS study, and we accepted that. And then at the Western Regional Council of Governments, we were looking at increasing our bonding, which I'm not allowed to vote on as a licensed investment advisor representative, but they voted the way I would have voted anyhow, so I was happy with that. They were going to raise their bonding limit and chose not to, to accommodate one project, which would have increased their liability immensely. I think their bonding limit was around $200 million, and they were looking to go to $800 million. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. On September 10th, along with my colleagues, we all attend our special city council meeting, closed session for city... meeting, closed session for city manager position. And on September 11th, I attended the Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting, where we approved the project study report for the North Main Corona Transit Connector Project, also approved a cooperative agreement with the Palo Verde Transit Valley Transit Agency for the bus maintenance facility, expansion, a hydrogen fueling station. We approved an Interstate 15 Smart Freeway Pilot Project construction agreement. We also approved the agreement for systems operator support Transmax software for the Smart Freeway Pilot Project. An hour after that meeting concluded, I was over at the next meeting, which is the RCTC Ad hoc Committee for Routes, State Route 79 corridor meeting, and there was no reportable action from that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, MPT Warren, and I have nothing to report at this time. Moving on to public comments, this is with regards to non-agenda items. Any person may address a governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action will be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Request for more time must be made to the city clerk with a timing limit to a maximum of six minutes. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Rodney Rodan.
Madam Mayor?
Three minutes?
Asking for four minutes.
It's three minutes, sir. You can go to the podium here. Thank you.
My name is Rodney Rodan. I fought at Beirut, Lebanon in 1983 when they blowed the building up. I towed 241 dead bodies, slept with them for two weeks, got them back home. Now, our president did not get shot at. That's a fact. The bottom line is, I came here the last time. I asked you, Madam Mayor, a question, and you refused to answer me. I asked the Chief of Police a question. Who gave Vicky Troutman permission to do a surveillance on my house? According to her and her own testimony, the police department here at Marietta gave her permission to surveil my house. And I'm trying to figure out why. I asked you this question the last time. I didn't get an answer, so I thought to come back until somebody answered me. Do you have an answer now?
I'm sorry, sir. This is a time for public to comment. It's not a time for question and answer. The council's not supposed to interact. It's just for the public to speak.
Okay, well, they don't have to interact, but I still have the same question posed because we both, everybody knows that I initiated a Department of Justice investigation on the City Council, the mayor, and the chief of police. So, I mean, you need to tell everybody the truth. We're talking about pickleballs, and the roads need to be straightened. What happened to the infrastructure money? You guys not investing in the road? On the corner of Alderwood, that place is developed, they moved the endangered species sign, Monarch Butterfly on the other side. They developed that corner. It was supposed to be for endangered species. I guess the developers just got a pass on that. I mean, honestly, hey, we got a new, a whole new generation of people coming through that's paying closer attention to politics and council members. And you guys will be held accountable because I'm going to keep you accountable. I fought for this country. I've been in here in Marietta for 31 years. I've had your city under a federal, they took your federal funding away from you for the same activity that you guys got going now. I don't know. You make reference every time you come to the meeting, and you guys never pass anything. There's a hole in the road down on Monroe by the school the kids got to get through. Huge. It's not fixed. The highways is a mess. I don't know how you guys got elected.
Thank you, Mr. Rodan. Your time is...
You're welcome.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Ward Andres.
Well, I have some good news, so I'm going to come and share. So we appreciate the cooperation of the city with the school district. As you know, I represent the school district as superintendent of schools from Marietta Valley. This is my second year, going into the third year as superintendent, and I just want to express my appreciation for the cooperation we have with the city. Our departments are great. We enjoy working with them. We have, unfortunately, it's been a really busy couple of weeks, the start of school with our police department, but even the simple things as coordinating fire services as needed or the evacuation of schools if we had to do that, even coordinating things like the airport fire that did not affect us, still having that open relationship with Chief of Fire and Chief of Police has been great. So we appreciate the ability to be on a first-name basis with them as well. That level of partnership is exceptional, and it's unlike anything I've ever done in the state of California where I've worked, is this relationship we have with the city. So please continue to allow that to occur. We love it. It's what keeps our 22,000 kids safe and do the best we can to cooperate in all the different things like potholes in front of schools or traffic intersections. And so we appreciate also the cooperation with our folks in planning department and even Parks and Rec, as we've been able to work through some challenges with the city pool and our pool, because guess what? It's all the taxpayers' pool, so let's figure out how to get it done. So we very much appreciate that type of work that goes on. As we look forward to the future, we all know, you know as well as I do, it's been a topic of conversation with the apartments that are coming into our neighborhoods, and it's all affecting the west side. The community of Marietta has never dealt with the massive type of influx of growth on the west side. We've seen it on the east side of our city, but not the west side. But here it comes. We have projections in our schools which take some of our schools well above 1,000 students. And so doing nothing with our attendance boundaries, Little Marietta Elementary School, which we just opened a new building, it cannot handle 1,750 students. Nobody wants to have an elementary school that size. Thompson Middle School is already at 1,600 kids. We don't want to see that go to 1,800 kids, right? And same with Coal Canyon. Couple of things we can do internally, but the reality is we have to address that. In a couple of weeks, we think we'll have it scheduled to where my deputy superintendent will come and speak and address to the city our process by which we're going to go through an attendance boundary redistricting or realignment. We've already engaged our parents. We've had over 3,000 parents give feedback on what is the criteria, like how should a school district or an attendance boundary be arranged? And we've had over 100 applicants apply to be on this committee that will look at attendance boundary maps. But Darren Daniel, my deputy superintendent, he'll be here in an upcoming meeting. I don't have the exact date, but he'll be here to present to the council where we're at. So I just want to share with you and appreciate the good things that we do together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Payam Danishwar.
It's three minutes, sir.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Payam Danishwar. Thank you very much for your time. I'm not very prepared well at all. I'm extremely moderate, so the left hates me and the right dislikes me, but that's okay. I presented the council members a map of the 2030 smart cities. I just want to take, I mean, actually, we'll go over this later, but Temecula is really not taken as seriously, only Jessica Alexander is. And, I mean, some of this stuff we're actually really working on is literally 15-minute cities. So, I mean, like all the green new scam stuff is for carbon nitrogen taxing and ESG scores, social credit scores. They already installed 500 cameras. They're going China model. Actually, I'm happy about the dogcat situation came up because, don't recommend this, but look at what China does. I don't think we should follow the China model at all. But mainly, I'll put this off right now because its focus is 2024 and on. I wanted to really bring up four main key issues. One is to stop the inflation, which will soon be stagflation, from the green new scam. I encourage you to go look at the hour or two of the Elon Musk President Trump on X to talk about the green new scam and why it's a scam. And obviously, stop the open borders. I think there's something, I'm connecting to the dots here. You know how WEF says 90%, they want 90% of the population? So I'm wondering, why are they just having about 10,000 people come in daily? I think it's to pack USA up. That's just, that's just my belief. I mean, it's not for the votes. We know that. It's not for workers. We know that because like they're giving them pretty much more than SSI, SSDI, unlimited debit card. But I just think it's past a pack USA up and possibly from the electric trucks can halt supply chain, or we can just run out of electricity. So again, I think these are the main issues we need to focus on, stopping the chance of World War III, also stopping the chance of rising crime. The problem I'm seeing is at the dock pond and so forth, I'm seeing a lot of people protesting against LGBTQDB, which I totally, I'm totally, yeah, I agree with the right on that, but they're protesting for poor life stuff. It's like, to me, I don't care about that at all, and that doesn't make a difference in my life. What they're actually doing is they're increasing the chances of people vote more for the Democrat. And unfortunately, this election is not about politics. It's about pure survival when you just take into those main four issues I mentioned. And then lastly, as I'm running out of time, I just wanted to say Trump vs. 47.com is for volunteering, and since 2020 was the safest, most secure election, we should just Marietta left and do, start ballot harvesting. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Kevin Hayes.
Hi, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Potem, and Restless City Council. As I think you all know, I emailed you last Friday regarding the updated fee schedule for the Marietta Police Department, and I just came here tonight to try to maybe advocate a couple more points so that hopefully it'll be something that you would consider. I know my email basically said, you know, rounding these numbers to the nearest dollar instead of having the cents on there for a matter of convenience, which is a big thing. But then also, a couple of things, like they don't have a cash register over there. So if a person comes in and, for example, traffic report is $18.77, if somebody says, well, here's $20.02, we don't want these people digging their calculators out on their phones and figuring out, oh, the guy gets a dollar and a quarterback, because a lot of people can't do math in their head. Not that, I'm not denigrating them by any means, but I'm just saying it's something that it's a lot easier to make change for, you know, a $20 bill on an $18 charge is two bucks. Almost everybody can do that in their head. So without a cash register, it's a lot harder to make that change, and when you're, that's going to be prone to making more mistakes. And me, as an ex-finance person, I did 36 years as a financial analyst, I know at the end of the day, also working in retail a long time ago, you got to balance that cash store to the penny. And sometimes when there's a mistake, now you got to be wasting a lot of time trying to figure out where those pennies go, because when you take your cash receipts over to the finance department, they want the balance as well. So it's a whole lot easier if you're doing things on the whole dollar. A lot more convenient, and I don't know how many of you have been over at the front lobby, but, you know, we got that big plate glass, and then there's that little counter thing or that little slot underneath. Trying to pass change back and forth to each other, kind of hard. And if you've ever tried to like, tried to pick up a penny or whatever, and it just doesn't want to come up, that's what we're going to be dealing with. So it's just, it's convenience, but it's also going to be more accurate, I think, when we, you know, do the daily receipts to bring over to the finance department. It'll also allow everybody who's working over there to spend more time servicing the community, which is what we're all here for, and less time, you know, monkeying with little bitty numbers if we can avoid it. So that's about it. I'm just hoping that I can convince you to see it my way. And I, like I said, I emailed you because it's my understanding you're the ones who approve these changes, so I'm hoping you will, or at least to give it a good consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Francisco Urbina.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor Lori Stone. I hope you and your family and your brother Jeff Stone, extremely high Q, both of you are doing well. Good evening, council members. Yeah. Is this CarMax like, and I know you can't necessarily directly answer, is this the largest or most profitable CarMax west of the Mississippi or in the nation? Anyway, I'm glad we have it. And, you know, probably it was last year I inquired with finance, how much is the life insurance for a peace officer? You know, they're putting their line on, their lives on the line, and someone said, I don't know if it's still the same, $150,000? That's peanuts. And, you know, the average house, if you want a decent house, is half a million dollars. And if a peace officer dies in line of duty, then, you know, they're, if they have children or whatever, they need more money. So if we can find more of getting some sort of additional lower-cost insurance for them through, you know, the Police Officers Association of the State of California and sheriffs, let's do it, because $150,000 is nothing. The other thing, yeah, traffic, these improvements that are being made, and I know I'm probably preaching to a choir, they're going to be obsolete the day they open. You know, we really need like a double-decker, and then if you are a trucker, whatever, and want to pay, then you can, blah, blah, blah. But the future is flying cars. If any of you watched the Tournament of Roses parade, the main sponsor was Honda, and they had like a mini helicopter with four propellers, what goes up must come down, blah, blah, blah. So some of us might have to get a pilot's license. The other thing, you know, it's police misconduct issues are something that we really should seriously consider, a public safety oversight mission. And I think we need to have a town hall meeting on the issues that matter most to Marietta, and so public safety, traffic, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't watch much television as much as I used to, but the three channels, Public Television and History Channel and Dr. Phil's merit program. There's a lot of things going on in our world, but we need to work together. We're all in the same Noah's Ark. Anyway, I wish, you know, there's nothing more powerful on earth than the power of prayer. You know, Satan and his fallen angels, you know, are loose. And you know what the mark of the beast is? This thing, I lost my iPhone 14 last year. Try to survive just one day, effectively. You can't. All right, God bless you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the consent calendar approval of items 1 through 11. The items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one vote, by one motion and vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from the City Council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting?
Yes, Madam Mayor. What number is it, Madam City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Holliday would like to withdraw actually the July 31st minutes from item number two, and I'd like to continue that until the next meeting to make a correction.
Very well.
With the remaining minutes being on the consent, correct, Councilmember? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, we need a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember DeForest, second by MPT Warren. Please vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to note for the record that there are no public comments on consent calendar items. Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to public hearings. The Six Code Update, MCA-202- The Six Code Update, MCA-2023-00003, revising, updating the city's developmental and municipal codes, introduction of ordinance number 610-24 and adoption of SEQA exemption. Staff, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Chris Tracy, I'm a senior planner here in our Advanced Planning Division, and tonight I'll be giving a presentation on the six code updates, as was, as was mentioned in the present, in the introduction. This item was continued from the September 3 city council meeting. The updates cover municipal code sections, titles 1, 8, and 10, and also the development code. The modifications were presented to the Development Advisory Group and also at a planning commission workshop for feedback and direction previously. The planning commission recommended approval back on June 26 of this year. As we go through this presentation, I'll cover how these updates clarify existing standards, are compliant with new state laws, and are more responsive for our customers. And finally, we intend to bring these updates for about every 18 to 24 months. Last comprehensive update was done in 2022. The first item here is our hazardous material updates. We worked with Myriad Fire and Rescue and also our building officials on developing these standards. We have updates to terminology to include the California Fire and Building Codes and notification protocols within there. Next here, we have some just minor typos to fix for our recycle, storage, and solid waste, storage areas in our multifamily projects. We're renumbering two tables for consistency with other sections in that same area. Next, we're proposing minor updates to 1622 for the installation of new barbed wire and razor fire, razor wire due to safety concerns and aesthetics. We have a carve-out to allow existing fencing to remain. There's exceptions here for agricultural and livestock operations moving forward. There's other fencing materials and techniques out there to provide a level of security. Next, it was discovered by staff that we're missing Saturdays for operating hours as it relates to construction noise, and this was an oversight in the past, so we'll be just addressing it here. We're currently missing parking quantities for agricultural and similar uses. Staff's been receiving a number of inquiries for establishing new uses at rural properties. We did look at other cities and developing these standards. For produce stands, we're proposing a minimum of three onsite parking spaces. For agricultural processing, one per 1,500 square feet of use area. For equestrian facilities, one per three corrals plus one horse trailer space for every 10 corrals, plus two for a caretaker's unit. Next, we just have some minor updates with our sign section. We're just addressing some typos and table renumbering there, and then just updating our office and business park standards as well. Next here, we're updating our residential accessory structure section. We're proposing consistent setback criteria for different accessory uses. We're clarifying criteria for guest living quarters and removal of references to ADUs which are separately defined. And also, we'll have updates here for landscape screening methods for the visible portions from the public right-of-way for a cargo container. With ADUs, we are providing some updates there just to be consistent with the government code section as outlined in Senate Bill 477. This is just a really minor cleanup item there. Next, we have telecommunication facilities. There's a minor discrepancy with the formatting and lettering under 1644, non-residential zoning district standards, and also incorporating innovation zone standards there too. Next, with auto sales, per economic developments request, we're providing minor updates for a simplified description for vehicle dealerships and vehicle storage facilities. We also have some minor vehicle storage updates for the screening, which shall apply to the non-vehicle storage components of the dealership. Next here, we have a discrepancy in the code on a 4.5 acre versus 5 acre standard for establishing a new residential wedding facility. The original intent was always for 5 acres, so this code update will address that item. And then also here, we have a report of commission actions to the council. This is currently done administratively, and the code will be updated to reflect that. And finally, with the development code updates, we're looking at some final map updates. This designates the city engineer with the approval authority from the city council for the processing of final maps. This will help streamline the process of final maps. This is consistent with industry standards and also the state's subdivision map act. And we do need also a definition for gross floor area. This helps with project review and with our objective design standards, and then as an industry standard, the measurement would be taken from the outer, outer surfaces of exterior walls. Switching gears here, I'll cover some of our municipal code updates. First, at code enforcement's request, we'll be updating 1.26, appeal of administrative citations. We currently implement a 30-day period for that appeal process. 20 days is currently identified in the code. Next here, we're proposing updates to Chapter 8.28, removal of refuse. This provides parameters for not allowing unknown people to remove trash containers at a location without the authorization of the owner. And this was from code enforcement as well. And finally, some front yard parking updates. At code enforcement's request, portions of Section 1044 were needed to be brought back to address the parking vehicles on private property. The main concern here is with vehicles on incompatible surfaces and/or creating hazardous condition from the dismantling of vehicles in front yard areas. Currently, there's a carve-out exception for larger properties with, due to some implementation cost constraints. And with the larger properties, this included ER2 zone properties, the lot size can be as small as 21,780 square feet in that zone, so you're talking about two large track home lots. So there could be quite a bit of potential visibility from the roadway into the front yard areas, and due to that concern, staff's recommending removal of the exception for the surfacing for that issue. And in closing, staff recommends the following actions. Conduct a public hearing. Finally, actions are exempt from SEQA pursuant to 15061B3. Third, conduct the first reading to introduce ordinance number 61024 entitled in ordinance of the city council of the city of Myriad, California, amending Title 16 of the Myriad Development Code to revise Chapters 1618, 22, 30, 34, 38, 44, 46, 90, 98, and 110, and also amending titles 1, 8, and 10 of the Myriad Municipal Code to revise Chapters 1.26, 8.28, and 10.44. And fourth, direct city staff to repair, execute, and file with Riverside County Clerk in the state of California, OPR, a notice of exemption within five working days of adoption of the ordinance. And with this, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Tracy, for the update. I have a couple questions. If we could go to the Saturday construction noise section?
Sure.
So the code was missing Saturdays as a definition, it said Monday through Friday and Sunday.
Correct. It was, I think, an oversight there when it was originally drafted.
And so what did we end up with?
We're just, it's a very minor update, we're just including Saturdays as far as the, the hours. Let me go to that section here.
Councilmember Holliday, we, we had quite a bit of discussion about this at the planning commission, because commission was confused as well, and we dove deeper into it, pretty long discussion. In, in, within that section, there's three places where days are called out, and Saturdays included in the first one, and in the third one, in the same section, but not in the second one. So it's just staff missed it. It doesn't mean we don't enforce noise constraints on Saturdays, we always have. It just was missing in that code section, it was just a complete oversight.
So what's allowed? I know Sundays and holidays, no construction noise is allowed anytime throughout the day, correct?
It depends on who's doing the construction.
A homeowner can do construction.
Right, right.
But you can't have a contractor come in and do construction.
That's technically true. We usually would rely on building or code enforcement to handle that sort of aspect, but our code is compliant with what's in building code.
And Monday through Friday at 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah, 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, and then...
Or it actually has to stop at 8:00 PM and can resume at 7:00 AM the next day. So there are hours that you can't have noise. And again, that's with a contractor.
Right, because our decibels go down at nighttime, too.
And so what is it, what is Saturday going to be?
Saturday would be the same as a Sunday or a holiday, see, it looks like 8:00 PM and 7:00. You can't have a work on, during those periods in, at a residential location, or...
So is it, is it like Sunday, or is it like a weekday?
It's, it's Saturday, Sunday, and holidays are the same.
So you can't have a contractor do work on a Saturday? Do you know how many contractors do work on Saturdays in the city?
That's, that's the same in the city I live in as well, yeah. But that's what's in our code, and that's, that's what's in the previous section, it talks about the same thing. It's, if we looked at the whole section, you'd see that it's just an oversight that the day was left out by staff whenever they drafted this code section.
I mean, I would be all for maybe expanded hours of no noise, but no construction on Saturday? That means that if anybody wants to do work on their home and they're hiring somebody that's doing it for side work, they can't do it at all, because that person is working Monday through Friday, and the homeowner would have to do it themselves over the weekend to not violate this section of code. Am I correct?
I'm not sure that's the way we enforce it.
Yeah.
But I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that's the case. You're bringing up similar things to what the commission said, and that's not the way we enforce it here in the city, and it's not the way it's been. This, this won't change that, as far as we know.
Well, I'm not questioning the enforceability, but if a resident calls and complains, because somebody's doing a multi-week project on a Saturday, that they're building a gazebo or something, that can be permitted and is, is allowed to be built, and they have somebody that's doing side work on a Saturday, it would be precluded. If someone calls and complained, you're telling me that we're not going to enforce what's written in our code?
No, there's, there is, so let me clarify, Councilmember. There is a noise standard for Saturdays in the same section, both before and after this one paragraph. This one paragraph is missing Saturdays. There is, there is an existing noise standard for Saturdays. It's not like there's a gap and there isn't a standard right now, and now we're putting one in. There already is one.
I understand that. What is the standard, though?
I have to look at the whole section.
Because the decibels are lower, far lower on Sunday, correct?
Trying to think of where this is, Chris.
I do too, I agree. Also, I'm trying to find out what the decibel level is. Yeah, I don't know if you want an apartment being, a whole apartment complex being built on a Saturday. Yeah. But my concern is, is that with this change, it could cause a lot of people a lot of problems, including the city trying to enforce it on the following Saturday.
I guess if, if it pleases the council, we could table this one item and, and bring this one item back in a future update, if that's, if that's what you'd like to see, but there is a standard for Saturdays, it's just, we thought, we saw that the day was missing in this one paragraph, so we still have a standard.
Maybe we could continue that discussion at our code enforcement ad hoc committee, if that's okay with you.
Here we go.
Mr. Ramaya.
Good evening. I'm just going to read from a section of the noise section that might help. It says that minor maintenance to residential real property, noise sources associated with the minor maintenance of residential real property provided activities take place between hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM on any day except Sunday, or between the hours of 9:00 AM and 8:00 PM on Sunday. So that would be allowed, like gazebos and pools might be.
So basically, you're just adding the word Saturday to it versus Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday.
And I would like to clarify that, when we do work on a discretionary project, like a multifamily project, we are looking at the noise impacts for the construction phase, and we are sometimes limiting those projects furthermore than what the ordinance says. So they do have to come in with a noise study, and that's how we condition projects for that.
Okay. All right. My second question is about cargo containers. Can you go to that section, please?
Sure.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Ramaya. No, I don't think it was that one.
It's the landscape screening.
Landscape screening methods for visible portions from the public right-of-way of a respective cargo container. Is that delineated by different zones in the city, or is that anywhere? Because we have a few of these in my district. If you have any in your district that are in rural residential, is this going to create a new requirement for the rural residential areas to screen?
It, it just helps clarify what's already there. I'll read what's already in there. It says landscape screening methods shall be provided onsite to the satisfaction of the planning director or their designee. This will just be clarifying that landscape screening methods shall be provided onsite for the portions of the container visible from the public right-of-way to the satisfaction of the development service director or their designee.
Because I, so it's up to the director to determine that, but I know...
Because, because some of those properties are very large, so it doesn't, you know, make sense to do screen if it's, you know, 1,000 feet in the property, you're not going to see it from the roadway.
Well, I'm thinking of one that is working on that happens to be five feet from his garage, and there's a code that says that he's got to move it, which he can't because it's next to a slope. And so we, we found that there is an actual building code that says if you anchor it, then there is no setback from a structure. But the problem is, is his property, five acres, is on a corner. So as you drive down one street and drive down the other street, there's not a single spot of that cargo container that wouldn't be seen.
Right, and those portions, so if it's visible from the street, that's...
Those are all from two streets.
Well, public right-of-way, so that could be inferred as, as both of those areas.
So you, he would have to have landscaping around the entire cargo container?
Well, the visible portions from the public right-of-way, so...
Which would be the whole cargo container. Is that in the code now?
It's, right now, it just says landscape screening methods shall be provided onsite to the satisfaction of the planning director or their designee, but...
So, yeah, to clarify, Councilmember, we did have some people who said, you can't even see my cargo container from the streets, why do I have to do landscaping? So we were looking to resolve that situation, but yeah, in the situation you described, they'd have to do screening now, anyway.
I'm going to get more phone calls. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday, Councilmember DeForest.
I just have a question on the approval of a project.
Yes.
Can you go back to that one, please?
For final maps?
For final maps. Yes. Can you explain that a little bit?
So a project will go through an entitlement process. It may go to planning commission, this is for a tentative tract map, say you have a subdivision. There's two parts of that, so there's the tentative phase, and then there's the final map phase. The final map phase comes in later. It's just, it's after it's already gone out for public review, there's discussion from neighbors and that sort of thing. At the end of it, you have the final map, that's really a, more of a consent type of item. So this would just give the authority for the city engineer, the approval authority to review those maps, review the MYLARS, and review it consistent with the state subdivision map act, making sure all the correct information's on the map, it conforms with state law, and the applicant would then be able to go to the county to be able to go record the map and process it further.
So, to me, that takes the council completely out of it.
If it's, if it's appealed by planning commission, so let's say in the earlier part, if a tentative tract map is appealed from planning commission, it would go to council if there's an issue, but that's earlier in the process, this is like at the very end.
End of the process?
Yes.
Okay, so... Okay, so this process would be way past an appeal process as well?
Yeah, it, the sequel would have already been done for it. Um, we're talking like right before they go pull bonds. Um, and, you know, not too far out from when they're going to start construction.
Yeah, council member, it would be on on the final map part. So for example, if someone's doing a subdivision with the development, um, like you've had a couple come recently in the last couple of years, like the Ivy House project or the the Gerson Ranch project, those types of projects, they still would come to you. Those are tentative maps, right? Um, this is in the final map after they've already gone through that. If they, some maps go to planning commission, some maps come to you, depending on the situation. You're still going to see the tentative maps that would come to you. This is in the final map process that the city engineer can just move the final maps a little bit quicker for the development community.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Can you go back to the dealership portion?
Can you go ahead and explain this, please?
Yeah, per economic development's request, um, we're providing some minor updates to have more of a simplified description of vehicle dealerships. Right now, it it's more limiting in how it defines vehicle dealerships. Let me go to that section here.
There's a little confusion about um how how we describe the different types of vehicle dealerships and the vehicle dealership storage facilities for cars. And we wanted to clarify and just kind of make it standard throughout the city. So that was the purpose of doing these updates.
And so with regards to the um vehicle storage, is this with regards to the the parking on the streets from the dealerships?
Yeah.
Does it address that?
So it's, this will um address that all non-vehicle, so that will be, well, that will be inserted in the code. All non-vehicle storage areas shall be screened from view from the public street and adjacent residential area. No storage except vehicle storage shall occur that is visible from the street. So um, the issue was with the cars being visible, I guess, from the roadway for some of these dealerships and having to put up block walls. The issue, I guess, has been more of the other components of the dealership. Maybe it's storage for the repair shop or um other operations within there, and the screening for those types of activities versus just the vehicles themselves.
With regards to other vehicle dealerships, can you give us an example of what would not be um part of this code update? An example, are we talking about a mom and pop type of store that has a dozen vehicles? Is that what we're talking about here?
No, so Mayor, the the vehicle dealerships is defined here would be like the large dealerships the city has. I think it requires a use permit for each dealership. So these are the, there's only a handful of them, you know, in the city. Um, that's what we're talking about, the dealerships that are permitted with use permits.
So with regards to the economic development's requests, providing minor updates for having a simplified description. I'm sorry, I'm not getting it. Can you explain to me what they're talking about?
So we needed to add used vehicles as part of that definition because a lot of
Thank you.
The long and short of it.
There's also, there's a, there's a description in there about a radius for how 20 miles or 30 miles this description of what type of dealership it is. We carve that out. It just, we know which ones are dealerships and which ones aren't. We don't need to know about these radiuses. So needless complication.
Thank you. Um, can we go to the agricultural slide?
Sure.
So let's talk about, are are the setbacks going to be part of the code update on this?
No, not the setbacks. The only thing um would be in the, the parking would have to be out of a line of sight area for like a produce stand. So it's safe when someone is pulling in and out of a produce stand. That'll be determined by our city, you know, engineering folks and that sort of thing.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, moving on to the public hearing.
Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public that would like to address any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Francisco Urbina.
Good evening once again. Uh, I'm glad that we're doing updates to the municipal code. I think the overall goal is to improve our quality of life. That's why a lot of people want to live in Southwest Riverside County. There should be construction allowed on Saturdays. Uh, one subdivision that probably is going to be annexed by the city of Indi, uh, the city of Menifee is Bravard at Menifee. It's a Richmond American Homes, uh, a very high-quality master-planned subdivision. And the demand is tremendous there. It's an excellent master-planned community, except they broke one car rule. Professor William Hoyt III, uh, master in civil engineering, graduated in 1950s from MIT in civil engineering. Uh, you should not have any four-way intersections in the interiors. Should always be three ways because most accidents happen in four-way intersections. Also, uh, the accessory dwellings, uh, we should consider where the lot size is sufficient to require the developer because of the economies of scale. If the developer doesn't want to put in a second unit, he should, uh, the developer, he or she should be required to help us with the HCD, the housing element, to provide the stubbing for the sewer and water and allow, you know, someone else later because of the economies of scale rather than someone digging that up. But one other thing that, but future consideration, um, the city of Indio, where I first had my first full-time job after I graduated from MIT Master in City Planning, they had a one-side yard requirement of 12 feet. So if people had an RV or a fifth wheel, they could, you know, create the gates to store it in the rear yard. And then one developer had a, like, an eight-foot wide door where you could put a boat through it if you carefully backed it up. And it it would store it in the rear yard away from the view of everyone. Uh, but anyway, I I support the municipal code updates. I think the overall goal is to improve our quality of life. Thank you very much.
That concludes public comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I will close the public hearing and bring it back for council discussion. Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Madam City Attorney, if you get this memo, do we need to read that in tonight?
Recommend that that be added to the ordinance. Um, we'll need clarification about where in the code they want it. Do you guys have this about the
It's Table 16.44.150-1.
And the footnote he'd like to add?
Footnote number six. You guys familiar with this?
Yeah.
You have it as well. So I'm going to, I'm just going to read it. It says cargo containers is an accessory structure. Shipping containers anchored in conformance with California Building Code Section 3115 and Chapter 16 shall not be subject to any building separation requirements otherwise required by the department code. So if they're anchored to the ground, currently it says that they have to be as many feet tall. They have to be that far away from a structure. But if they're anchored, the building code says that they don't need to be, have that separation. So we would have to add this into our code update if my colleagues agree.
With the motion
Came from David Chanteron.
Yeah, with the motion to approve the ordinance or
With
with other revisions, that would be part of it, yes.
Madam City Clerk, you, you got it?
Actually, I I don't, but
I'll give you the copy.
Yeah, this is recorded, so I can
Fantastic.
Back in, Councilmember Holiday, he might be able to
I will make a motion to approve
Thank you.
with that amendment.
Um, before we do that, sir, um, were there any other discussion from council?
Could we have a second and then a discussion?
I'm sorry?
Could we have a second and then a discussion, please?
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Holiday and a second by Councilmember DeForest. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Seeing none? Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Lavelle. Motion carries unanimously 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you so much for your presentation.
And Madam Mayor, if I may do a procedural action.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries with the first reading to introduce the ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Marietta, amending Title 16 of the Marietta Development Code to revise Chapters 16.18, 16.22, 16.30, 16.34, 16.38, 16.44, 16.46, 16.90, 16.98, and 16.110, and amending Titles 1, 8, and 10 of the Marietta Municipal Code to revise Chapters 1.26, 8.28, and 10.44 as amended.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to discussion item 13, Regional Homeless Action Plan. And welcome, Mr. Ambrose.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you is a culmination of about seven years of work in the homeless field that we have been doing here in Marietta, and specifically two years of work on a regional homeless action plan. As you may remember, um, the city of Marietta took the lead and applied for and received funding from the substance, the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration in Washington DC. It was advocated on our behalf by Congressman Ken Calvert and his staff. This allowed us to bring on a consultant, Baker Tilly, to perform a regional homeless action plan. Uh, Mrs. Susan Price is here to present the findings from that. I do want to preface this all by saying Susan Price is one of the foremost experts in the homeless field. She served as Orange County's Homeless Czar. She served on numerous uh continuums of care. She's been with us throughout this process for about two years, and we are extremely excited to bring this forward to you. So I will turn things over to her, and I will remain for any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Um, good, good evening, everyone, mayor and city council and officials here with the city of Marietta. It's my pleasure to be here to talk about something that is among my favorite topics, believe it or not, and that is homelessness. Um, I'm going to go through a PowerPoint that's kind of a template for all five cities. And I know that I'm speaking to an audience that's pretty well experienced in the area, so I'll try to be efficient. Um, and then from that, respond to any questions that you may have. Um, as Brian said, I have about 25 years' experience working with cities and county governments on the issue of homelessness. That's somewhat unique because governments have not really been in the business of addressing homelessness for that long. Um, I had the fortune of working with the city of Long Beach for 14 years, running its continuum of care, and then with the county of Orange for close to five years, helping to dismantle and rebuild a system in the county of Orange. It was wonderful to do so. And then I retired from the city of Costa Mesa as the assistant city manager there. Um, so again, it's just, it's something I can never stop doing this work. So it's great to be at your council meeting here tonight. Okay, which button is it? That's the one I'm clicking. Okay. All right. Moving quickly, um, you know, back in 2016, five cities came together to establish by resolution a regional homeless alliance. In these five cities, each of them has developed a response to homelessness individually and independently of each other. And from 2016 forward, has begun to collaborate, I would say somewhat informally in the work that each of you are doing. And so what this project is really about is how to integrate those efforts into a more regionalized approach. And so I'll be talking more specifically about how to integrate those efforts of five cities. Southwest Riverside County is very well positioned. When you look at the map here, um, your five cities are geographically aligned in a county that is quite large and has a homeless population that's centralized around the city of Riverside, downtown Riverside. And so historically, resources from the county continuum of care have not necessarily made it out here to Southwest Riverside County in equal measure to the needs that you have established in your communities. And so with this project, I'm I'm happy to report that over the course of the last year, we've already seen um small successes and and some larger successes are on the way. And I'll kind of allude to that in just a few moments. But for our project was really to take a look at this particular geographic area within the county and how to create an ecosystem to address and better respond to homelessness. So looking at a regional approach, integrating all five cities, we conducted over 50 interviews with stakeholders that were identified by you, by your city, and by the other four cities. So police chiefs, fire chiefs, selected officials, city management, department heads, uh, service providers, uh, school district, Department of Education, Chamber of Commerce. So give you just a broad brush stroke because we know homelessness is is impacting really every sector of our community, and we wanted to leave no stone unturned. Um, I also participated in doing site visits in each of the five cities where police and street outreach teams took me on ride-alongs for a couple of hours and showed me where homeless people are in your community. Um, from my lens and my eye, I could potentially tell you why they're in those areas, why certain areas are more congregation than other areas in each community. There's always a draw. Sometimes it's less um easy to to decipher what that is. And that's why I do site visits. Um, and then a lot of data and resource inventory and a gaps analysis. The final report, which you have a copy of, is basically seven overarching goals and 26 recommendations. Um, don't be overwhelmed by all of that. It's basically from A to Z, how to solve homelessness. Um, you don't need to do it in one short period of time. It's incremental progress. And your cities, I congratulate you for being proactive in addressing this issue head-on. Um, when you look at other urban regional cities that are really grappling with the issues, I don't see that in Southwest Riverside County. And I'm proud to be a part of this project because you are being proactive. I'm going to breeze through this really quickly. These are, these are things that are very well-known to your community, and really all of them. Um, the need for a behavioral health response. Behavioral health is mental health and addiction treatment. From 2015 to today, all of our communities are experiencing this change in demographics with homelessness. And it's a change in resource distribution as well. And so having to integrate with the county who operates that behavioral health system is something that's very, very critical, and you hear me talk about that quite a bit. Also, you know, the continuum of care resources. You know the continuum of care is operated by the county of Riverside. They're responsible for the entire jurisdiction. The county departments can integrate into your cities. We've already seen that work begin in the last year. So there's some really good things happening now. Data was a big one. A lot of people talked about data. We don't have clear data on the individuals in our community. Um, the continuum of care runs the HMIS system. Homeless Management Information System is an acronym for their data system. And what that is, is basically a system that catalogs the service history and and uptake of resources for every homeless person that has entered a resource in the county of Riverside. It's an important database. It's an important database to look at coordinated entry, which puts folks from that data system into the available housing units. So you can see just from that simple fact, every one of the people that are made contact with in your community and in the RHA need to be in that system in order to get connected to housing resources that are county-wide. So I I won't um talk about that too much more, but that is kind of the crux of why the county continuum of care is so important. Better coordination and integration of efforts. All five cities align and agree um that the data piece is super important. Um, the other piece is funding. Um, a lot of communities are using general fund to fund homeless programming. When you look at the state money that has come down from the governor over the course of the last eight to 10 years, millions and millions of dollars coming to the continuum of care in Riverside and to the county of Riverside in equal amounts. So those allocations is called HAP, homelessness housing assistance program. I think that's right. Um, there's so many acronyms, it does There's so many acronyms, it doesn't matter. HAP-6 is a resource that wasn't going to happen, but due to advocacy in Riverside County and other jurisdictions, the governor has released that funding source. The good news is with that, is that in the RFP, it says Southwest Riverside County RHA is a priority for funding. That's just amazing.
Fantastic.
And the reason for that is because when cities align together, your strength in numbers, your capacity, your ability to utilize that funding to have an impact in your community is that much greater. So I hope that's not the last round of funding, but it might be. So with that, I'm going to move on for a moment. I went through, I went through every city. It was very interesting in Marietta. You took me to a lot of places, interesting places, but you know, it's, and we met some folks, you know, and looking at the demographics of homelessness right now, I mean, I know that our resources are not matching to what the populations need. I won't go into the ballot measures, but there's a lot of systemic change coming forward in the mental health system and the addictions treatment center world. Those, and also CAL-AIM, right? Medi-Cal waiver, CAL-AIM is a program that also takes the healthcare system and wraps it around your homeless population. So while you might think the funding from the state is changing or maybe going away, it isn't. It's just changing and moving into a direction of serving the populations in the way that we needed it to for the last several years. So while we've been struggling as communities, what we're going to see is funding coming around that actually meets the needs of the population we're serving. That's the good news. In these five cities in the RHA, you have a lot of land. I'm talking about land in the, in the last presentation. You have a lot of open space. You have a lot of private land where the owner doesn't have a house on that land, you know, doing the 602 letters for private property, allow law enforcement to go and enforce loitering and trespassing. It's a lot of different needs in Southwest Riverside County that maybe other, more urban jurisdictions don't, don't deal with. But you all are dealing with all of these things fairly well. Not going to preach to the choir here, but you know, the transit system in Southwest Riverside County, maybe a conduit moving folks around. You have big hospitals, big healthcare centers. Discharge planning from those hospitals is important. Looking at shopping centers, commercial centers, libraries. I went to them all while I was here, and I got a really good look at what's happening in your community. Limited access to same-day shelter beds is a big issue for your outreach teams. They can't always get a bed on the same day when they need it. When they need to jump through the window and the person's interested to go to a program, that program isn't always available. And then the mental health, addictions resources, hopefully we'll start to see that infrastructure improve over the next few years. I'm not going to go over the homeless count with all of you. I'll spare you that, but I will say to you that the Regional Homeless Alliance, the five cities make up about 11% of the county of Riverside homeless count results. Homeless counts are just baselines. They don't represent the homeless population in your city over time, and I'll talk about that in a little while, but 11% of the total county's population. Certainly, the county has been integrating a lot of their efforts with us in the last year as a result of this project, and certainly it's been a pleasure to work with Tanya Torino and her team. This slide here, I just make note on, in the report, we talk about a GAPS analysis, which is difficult to do because we don't have consistent data. We don't have strong HMIS data from this region, and each city is collecting data in a different way, which I will say to you is one of our recommendations to align that so that you're more powerful when you go for grant applications. You've got to align your data, but you currently don't have that, so it's difficult to do a GAPS analysis. I took the unsheltered count of 181. I did a 60% number of 108. It's not on the slide. I'm just telling you how I came up with this. And then I looked at the duplicate contacts of your outreach teams in the five cities. You're contacting the same people over and over. You all know who they are by name, and you've been dealing with them, some of them, for many, many years. That's a red flag. So when you look at that, and you say 81 to 103 out of the 181 are people that we know and that we've been knowing for years. That's the thing that we need to address in the RHA, is taking a look at what those folks need. You have a point-in-time count, but let's talk about those folks, the 81 to 103, and get with the county on behavioral health, addictions treatment, and the homeless sheltering needs of this population so that you can get to some real-time intake into beds in real time from the street outreach teams. Just going to mention on here, there are 280 beds in the Regional Homeless Alliance. 280 beds primarily is Project Achieve, I mean, Project Touch, sorry, Project Touch, and then 16 beds at the anchor in the city of Elsinore. I've talked about this already. This is the foundation, shared data, improved funding that's collaborative, and increase of county resources integrated into the city efforts that you are already engaged in. This again is a similar slide. I think there's one thing on here I want to mention, is that there are no points of entry in the Regional Homeless Alliance for homeless persons seeking help. Where they would go, they might come to the library, they might come to City Hall, they're probably looking for Brian Ambrose and other folks, but it's just kind of happenstance that they come across somebody. Otherwise, they're waiting for an outreach worker to contact them, and that's somewhat challenging. For a person that's actually seeking help, they don't know how to find it, where to find it. And so that's something that's in the plan as well. This, I just bring this slide to you as here are the necessary ingredients of a robust system of care. You have all of these ingredients between the five cities and the county. You have all of these things. The key ingredient is integration of those things in your city and across the five cities. I won't go over this slide either, but it's, it's kind of like, I love this slide because it shows you all the money that has come through the state to the county. In addition, there's, there's some funding here that is not going to continue. There's some funding here that will continue, and if you want to ask me more about that, I can, I can help you decipher all of that, but you don't have a housing authority in the Regional Homeless Alliance, but the county does, and they're setting aside major amount of housing subsidy for homeless populations for clients in that data system. Super important to get people in that data system. Okay, rounding the corner and wrapping up, these are the 26 recommendations in the goals from data collection and streamlining across the five cities. It's okay to collect all the data that you want to collect, but it's also important to collect the same data as the other four cities, at least as a subset, so that you can use that data to represent yourselves regionally when you go for grant applications. I'm going to spill the beans right now and just say that, that three of your cities have submitted an encampment resolution grant to the state a while ago through the continuum of care and with their assistance, and you should be finding out in the last week of September, the first week of October, whether you've received that funding. It'll be huge for your jurisdiction. It's a $12 million grant for the Marietta Creek Trail, and it's Elsinore, Marietta, and Wildomar. And with that, you get the integration of the county behavioral health, the street medicine teams, and the behavioral health, like CBAT, another acronym, but CBAT, and all the other mental health, street medicine programs integrated into that effort. Voila, that is beautiful for your community to be able to operate that program, and I'm, I'm pretty hopeful that you're going to get it. On prevention, I'll just say your school districts have a lot of families with children, somewhere between 400 and 500 children in your school district are experiencing homelessness. Now, that's not families, because there could be two or three kids from that household in there. The encampments we talked about, medical behavioral health, same-day shelter beds, collaboration with the continuum of care, funding. Development of affordable housing, that's a slow roll. Development of affordable housing is a long-term goal, doesn't get fixed quickly, as we know, but the county is allocating housing resources for the homeless population, and the RHA needs to connect better to that. Did I skip one? That's okay, I'm going to go to this one. The Regional Homeless Alliance, part of our project was, you know, to look at how the five cities would connect to each other. It makes the most sense that this would be an MOU between the five cities, not a JPA, sort of formal agreement, but an MOU that basically looks at aligning the street outreach to regional instead of city by city. Now, law enforcement doesn't have any jurisdiction outside of your city borders, but as an example, Marietta did a contract with Wildomar for street outreach. Awesome. We need more of that. We have two cities that are working with a different service provider, and they're happy with that. It's okay. They don't all have to use the same provider. You have the autonomy as a city to make those decisions, right, as a council, but integrating those efforts will be important. And then the roles of the cities, really just to provide shared leadership. Marietta has been really on the cusp of a lot of this and done a lot of the leadership work, but it'll be important to have a shared leadership structure for sustainability with the other four cities to make sure that they have strong and equal investment in the partnership. And then looking at subcommittees for data, COC participation, and bringing in grant money, hopefully to replace general fund investments that have gone on over time. So no-cost MOU to formalize. A lot of cities have asked, what's this going to cost? Doesn't have to cost anything. You're already doing it. It's just working smarter, working more collaboratively in a regionalized approach instead of city by city. There isn't anything specific that you're sharing cost on at this time, but I could share multiple examples of other cities. In Orange County, 13 of them came together to fund 265 shelter beds that were located in two cities, but all 13 city councils signed on to that, something that I did when I was in Orange County. The leadership structure, I think it'll be important to create that, and then aligning your data, getting this encampment grant and integrating with the county. All of these things are in the works. Voila.
Thank you so much for, tried to be fast. Great presentation. Councilmember Holiday.
I think I beat Councilmember Warren by a half a second. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for a great presentation. Had a couple of questions. If you could go to the slides that showed the number of homeless...
The point-in-time or this one?
One before that. Okay, so the interesting thing to me is, because I'm a numbers guy, I know homelessness is about far more than numbers, but that's what I gravitate towards. It's interesting to me that our total homeless population was 165 on this slide, which is more than any other city. And if you go to the next slide, our available beds are 166. And when you say available beds, that doesn't mean vacant beds. That means beds that are available for anyone homeless, which we're utilizing, I think, overall, you said 96% in that second slide. Do you think that our homeless number is 165 is because we have available beds?
Potentially, except I don't have a delineation of are they family beds or individual beds? And the trick with that is that Project Touch kind of evolves the type of bed based on the crisis presented to them, so it's not a black and white number of how many are for families with children and how many are for individuals. Also, I will say to you, when they do homeless counts, the point-in-time count, they're looking at a visible homeless population on the streets on one day. So you're not necessarily, I will tell you, the family numbers are going to be an undercount.
Certainly.
So that, I don't know if I'm helping you or confusing you.
No.
But, but what it is, is basically, you know, you're undercounting homeless families. The beds might be filled with homeless families, and then what you've got on the street population is primarily individuals.
But those numbers from Marietta to the other four cities are quite disparate.
We are a little unique, and Susan, if you can go back one slide, it is incredibly rare for a city to have 10 times the amount of people sheltered homeless than unsheltered. That is incredibly rare. Now, we can't take much credit for that. Project Touch has a lot of available beds, and they've been doing this for a very long time. I think we are in a very envious position when you compare these numbers to, say, the desert communities.
Yeah, and like I say, I think the link there, though, is like you look at Lake Elsinore with 110 homeless population, but the number of available beds is in the 40s.
Correct.
I think some of the reason that we have more homeless within our borders is because we have been providing services under your leadership for a while.
Yeah, a lot, so cities are new to this. I mean, none of the cities were even in this, this, what I'll call a game, until after Martin v. Boise, which forced us kind of into the homeless game. But before that, it was a homeless social services provided by the county.
By the county.
Most other cities don't have that infrastructure. They just don't. They don't have the nonprofits. They don't, they haven't thought this out. We've been working at this consistently since 2018 because we knew Martin v. Boise was going to change the landscape for us, and it did. And so, again, we're, we're very fortunate. Again, I can't take the credit for that. Project Touch has those available beds, but what you see in, let's say, Lake Elsinore, is much more than norm. As a matter of fact, there's, there's a lot of cities out there that their homeless, their unsheltered homeless population is skyrocketed, and they have available 25 beds.
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, they need to get caught up to speed, and you do need to take some of the credit, Brian. I know you, didn't you just speak somewhere on homelessness last week?
We spoke at the League of California, the Regional League of Homelessness California. But I will point out that also, the employee of the year is here in the front row, Lindsey Sisti, who is out on the streets every day.
Yes. Couple of questions. One of your slides says we need to regionalize street outreach. Can you, can you explain that a little better? Because Marietta is all about local control. Not that we want to control our homeless population in this program, and I know we, this, this alliance is going to help all the cities do better, even though we're on the cutting edge, it's going to help us do better as well. But are you thinking of regionalizing as having a regionalized street outreach team? Or is each city going to have their outreach team that just collaborates together?
It could be either or both. You know, yes, cities have the autonomy to create the system and their response the way they want to create that, but I will tell you that the population is moving across borders. And so, you know, having a street outreach team that's a nonprofit operating across borders and working in that whole area, you'll be able to melt the numbers downward because it's similar populations that you're, that you're all serving. If one city is, is clearing up an encampment area, the next city over is going to have an experience with those individuals and vice versa. So you've got to coordinate that. If somebody's doing this, then everyone should be over there doing that and making sure that folks are getting to the resource instead of just moving over to the next city. You've got a huge number of folks that are just being contacted over and over and over without that change in outcome. So you've got to, you flip the script on that and get people to their resources, and law enforcement can't go across borders, neither can code enforcement. And they're also coming from, and even though we have humanistic law enforcement officers, they're still wearing a uniform, and it's terrifying for a homeless person who thinks that they're coming to move them along or kick them out or do whatever. If there's a nonprofit involved that's really trying to, you know, provide the transportation for them and their pets and their belongings and get them over to that program, that's a completely different experience and narrative, and that's how you reduce homelessness in your community.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification. And the other thing I saw on one of your slides is you're keeping track in your dataset of those individuals who have refused services.
It's more anecdotal from each of the cities basically telling us who they know. When I go out to do the outreach and I talk to these folks directly, and then they introduce me to these folks that they've been talking to regularly. And why I've said to Brian is, you know, the by-name list doesn't have to be an H M I S. The by-name list is the folks that you know in your community that you've been knowing over time. That's a different number and a different population than what you'll get in any homeless count. But that's the population you need to focus your investments and your resources on, is making sure that you get what that person needs and get them connected to that. And it takes time through outreach to be able to do that. Not everybody says yes when you go out and talk to them.
And I know when Brian includes his homelessness updates and our city council updates that we get regularly, it's always exciting to see when he reports that we've been in touch with this person 10, 12, 15 times. They accepted services this week. That's a huge win.
It's a beautiful thing.
Yeah, thank you, guys. You guys are doing great.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. An incredible report, I must tell you. What caught my eye when you said this? You suggested a point of contact where a homeless person who wants services, there really isn't one location for them to go to. And as sensitive and compassionate as our police department is and our officers out on the street, I'm sure to them, they're still a scary scene because they think they're going to be hauled away somewhere or asked to move along or whatever, which is not what our team does. But what is a suggestion for cities to use as a place for these homeless people that want service and they don't know where to go and they're unwilling to go to our police department to ask for help?
Every city is different. You may have a nonprofit that's located somewhere in your city that would be willing to do that. You know, we did go and visit a couple of nonprofit locations. You know, some will use a library. In the city of Long Beach, we actually used our central library as a point of entry. Some cities don't want to do that for many reasons. A community center, a senior center. Be surprised how many homeless people are seniors. You know, there's a whole host of places that you can determine based on the needs. And, you know, your staff would be able to answer that question, potentially better than I could. You know, there's also pocket guide resource directories to be able to distribute something in hard copy to a person so that they know a map to the transit system and how they can get to that other location where they can get resources.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Something virtual.
Thank you so much for all the time and effort you put into helping our city. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, it was my pleasure.
Thank you, MPT Warren. Councilmember LaBelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for the presentation. And Brian, thanks again for all the hard work and tenacity on this. I have a couple just specific questions. On Menifee, here in this table that's pulled up, we have a sheltered count of zero. Does that mean that the 25 there would typically not want the service or the help at that time, or is it?
So this was the point-in-time count, which is, they used to do it every year. We have since moved to every other year. So it's a one-day count, typically at the very end of January or very beginning of February. So one-day count, this was what they found. So in 2023, in Menifee, there were 25 individuals that were either interviewed or observed homeless on the streets. And then the county goes through and contacts all of those agencies, the Project Touches, the Path of Lives, and finds out how many were in the shelter that evening. Menifee does not have any shelter beds in their city.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. I didn't know if they had four in '22 and then lost those four beds or something. So when Menifee does their count, or when you guys see the unsheltered, you don't ask them if they're staying somewhere tonight? Or you know if they're staying somewhere?
Certainly, we do. So for the unsheltered, there's a survey that we take. And I, you know, if anybody wants to do the point-in-time count, if you know the date off the top of your head, Lindsay.
Is that the one that's like 5:00 in the morning?
It's the one that's 5:00 in the morning. Usually very cold. Please come out. The mayor has been out there before, and it's a very interesting and safe environment. As a matter of fact, our officer in the back of the room, Aaron Creed, has helped on it as well.
That's cool. I might take you up on that.
Good.
Depending on what day it is, if I'm here.
The 22nd of January.
January 2nd?
22nd.
22nd. Super cold, I bet.
Yes, it will be.
Mr. Holliday kind of alluded to this question or point. The bed count being in our city, I would be curious, the 13 cities you mentioned in Orange County, you said there was two cities that actually housed the homeless population. Did that or is that problematic at any point? Because you have two cities housing the homeless population that it may grow out of, you know, out of capacity or be kind of a focal point where the other cities don't have to, you know, for lack of better words, deal with that population every day. How is that navigated in such a large agreement situation, I guess?
That's a big question. And I will tell you that the two cities that came forward to host the shelter programs, they have a reduction in costs because they're the host and their public safety are responding to those locations. The other 11 cities are paying for those beds. But it doesn't stop there. They're not just referring homeless populations in for beds and then that's it. You have to look at the exits from that shelter. So the whole system is kind of designed around these 13 cities working together, not just on the referral to the shelter bed, but exit from the shelter bed as well. And all of the funding that goes into the coordination of intakes and exits, it's very complicated, as you might imagine. But all of the cities are engaged in that broader system. And not to say that they don't have homeless people remaining in their cities, because they do. But the whole thing with, you know, Martin v. Boise was you have to have a bed available for the person that wants to go to a program. And they did a 60% split. And you might recall, we were under a federal judge as well. So Judge David O. Carter, if you may recall, you can look that one up. But that was basically why those cities engaged in that, being under the umbrella of having access to beds. The beds don't have to be in your city, but they have to be accessible to the population as you try to refer them to resource.
And that would be an easy way for a city to buy into the model or the solution is to contract those beds somewhere within proximity that would be accessible to the homeless.
Absolutely encourage, strongly encourage every city to do that, either host it or buy into a system. And I have a multitude of examples where I've participated in those things.
And if I can bring up real quick two points. First and foremost, two cities use our emergency shelter. So those 100 and some beds that you see in Marietta, that's different housing stocks. So that's emergency shelter beds, that's transitional housing, runs a wide gamut. So it's not just your emergency shelter, those people that just came off the street. The point I wanted to raise is, so we have an MOU with the city of Wildomar for their street outreach. Within that MOU, there is a line that says, "Wildomar will work to the best of its ability." And I think the exact line is, "We'll make a good faith effort to cite a homeless shelter in their city." We have another city that may want to come in and do what we're doing as well. And we're gonna put that same line in there so that there's, you know, that, there's not this dropping off in the different cities. The second point I want to make real quick is, we've had an agreement with Project Touch for years. We have an emergency shelter. It's four units. It can house with children, sometimes up to 22. I've received exactly two calls of complaints during the years that we've had the agreement. And most people in the city, I don't even think, no, we have an emergency shelter. One call was a real call. A gentleman had a mental health episode in the middle of the night. So 1:00 in the morning, he was out screaming on the street. He'd have been out screaming on the street regardless if he was at Project Touch or not. The other one, and the mayor pro tem may remember this one, we had a citizen complain about Project Touch's landscaping, that they were letting the place go. And I had just been there. I, you know, got the call from the mayor pro tem, went right over there and took a picture of it, I think, and sent it to you. Basically, they were just trying to rat out Project Touch. It wasn't even the right facility. It wasn't even the right address.
Would a good statement to say on this effort be that if you have the count of unsheltered at 181, that within the five cities, you would want probably 200 beds at some point? Or just available if you have a count that you know of?
Actually, I may have failed to mention that when I was describing the 181. I knew 60% of that was 108. And then from there, I got to 60 shelter beds and 48 behavioral health beds. The math that I was doing regarding that was also looking at the encampment resolution grant application that was going to be going in and trying to determine how many behavioral health beds were going to assist your jurisdiction in addressing that population that just unilaterally declining any efforts. And looking at, you know, whether it's addictions treatment or behavioral health, you know, mental health programming, that was the gap that was keeping us from being able to address their needs.
Now, when you say beds, are those inpatients' beds that are healthcare designated? Because I don't, we obviously don't have the 48.
No, you don't. You don't, but the county does. And they're readily available for them to set aside for these encampment grant programs. It's fascinating how many beds can be, you know, kind of materialized when you get that much of a funding source that $12 million is not just funding outreach, it's funding more beds.
So those aren't at the RUHS, then? Where those beds would have to be at a hospital setting or a hospital base?
It could be a whole host of resources from crisis stabilization, residential, 90-day program beds, fundamentally funded by the Mental Health Services Act. You know, most of our jurisdictions don't have the infrastructure for the volume of need that we all face. You know, that's just a known fact. Hopefully, we're improving upon that next year.
Which leads me to my last question. The, are you familiar with the FQHC model for?
Absolutely.
The funding mechanism from the federal to create those, which behavioral health is a component of that, but not in the inpatient setting? The state buying into that, does that flow through the county for mental health resources, or is that a separate?
It's a separate thing. Federally qualified health centers are throughout the area. They receive a higher reimbursement rate for serving the homeless populations. It's Medicare-driven. And there are, I don't know off the top of my head where they are in Riverside County, but...
We have one at the hospital here at Loma Linda. There's a couple in Temecula that I know of. They're becoming more popular. But I know we don't have that inpatient component there, and nor do I think that ever will be at the FQ. But I was curious if those funds did flow from the Fed to the state to the county, but it doesn't sound like that's correct, that that could be a mechanism that maybe is woven in at some point.
FQHCs are primarily medical clinics, healthcare centers. They're not residential. I don't know of any residential ones off the top of my head. But FQHCs are a valuable partner in this work, absolutely. So you all have the street medicine program rolling out in your communities now, which is a beautiful way to overcome the reluctance of people to get into resources if you're addressing their medical needs there on the spot, on the ground in your community. People are more receptive to that because you're not trying to move them on or get them into, you know, recovery. Maybe people aren't ready for that today. Maybe Thursday they will be. But, you know, the medical piece is a very good engagement tool that you all have access to now.
I actually lied, I have one more question. The, you said there was a $12 million grant we were hopefully going to get from the county funding source for this effort. How does, I know we look good as this coalition of cities for the county, but the county is obviously very large geographically. We're not that big compared to the rest of the county. Do they look at this as an area of need when they really lay out all the pieces on the table and compare us to the rest of the county? Are we, do we have a good fight in that conversation, I guess?
I believe you do. And I've seen it. I've actually seen the tangible results just in the last year in doing this project. The county is paying attention. The Board of Supervisors is paying attention. When you've got five cities locking together, locking arms and saying, "We're gonna do this together," everyone's paying attention. So just, you know, the state encampment grant program is from the state, but they are typically funding only through the continuum of care to jurisdictions that are locking together. We've had cities apply by themselves. They don't get it. They never get those grants.
You think it'd be a fair assumption to assume the county would look at this type of effort and favor and reward based on that, trying to do something instead of operating in silos?
Evidenced by the HAP RFP that just, it's out now. You should send that to your council because it says right in there, southwest Riverside County RHA is a priority for funding under this RFP. That's huge.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Congratulations, Councilmember LaBelle. Brian, Elsinore has 16 beds?
Yeah, the anchor facility.
That's all they have?
Correct.
Menifee has zero.
There are beds there.
How many beds are in Menifee?
So I think Project Touch has a house up in Menifee. It probably wasn't utilized on the day of the count.
Four, five, four beds, because I see the count here, sheltered four.
It's more than that, but I'd have to find the heat map in here, just if I can find it while we're talking. Project Touch has beds in every one of the cities.
Even Temecula?
Yeah, they have beds in every one of the cities.
Again, you're talking different housing stocks. So not just emergency shelter beds. You got the transitional, and you got the other beds that they have, that they kind of progressed through.
Not all of them are represented in the point-in-time count. I will give you that little anomaly. Sometimes they don't report. Sometimes they have zero, sometimes they don't report. You don't know which one that is.
I think it's really important. I mean, I understand that the Orange County project is successful having two cities that shelter people. For southwest Riverside County, as you know, we're still dealing with NIMBY. And I think it's really important, if we move forward with this regional homeless action plan, that all five cities have beds available. And if we can even be like-minded across the board, accommodate, you know, the entire population, that would be fantastic. You alluded that there was a city coming onboard with additional beds. Is that correct?
No, I'm not saying additional beds. There would be a line in the MOU if we do move forward with that city of a good faith effort to cite a homeless shelter.
Okay, fantastic. So, but it's not required. But we're, but there's a line.
We are at the very beginning of building this infrastructure. We can scare off the other cities and say, "You must have this ready by the day we sign the MOU."
I wouldn't want that. But again, we want everyone to be playing well in the sandbox, basically.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, fantastic. Ms. Price, your presentation was fantastic. So thank you so much for your dedication to our homeless and mental health. Really appreciate this. And if you're ever bored and you want to Google Lori Stone homeless, I think you'll get a kick out of that. I did actual, I went undercover as a homeless person about 15 years ago.
Good for you.
Yeah, it was an interesting project, so.
I will Google that, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilmembers, let's bring it back to discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will call for a motion and a second. I have a motion by Councilmember LaBelle and a second by MPT Warren.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Fantastic. Moving on to discussion item 14, to consider adopting a resolution supporting Proposition 36, the Homelessness Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act. Hello, Isaac, how are you?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Isaac Bravo, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. Tonight before you for your consideration, is a resolution to adopt proposition, or a resolution a resolution to adopt a stance of support for Proposition 36. As background, in 2014, Proposition 47 was approved by the voters, which changed a lot of the categories of the penal code from felonies to misdemeanors. That reclassification is extremely important because it dictates not only where the, where the sentence will be served, as example, misdemeanors are served in county facilities and felonies are done at the state level. So the Proposition 36, and I want to read this verbatim because it's really important, makes several key changes related to punishment for theft and drug crimes. First, it creates punishments for crimes such as retail theft and dealing fentanyl. Second, it creates a treatment-focused court process for some drug possession crimes. And three, it requires the courts to advise drug-dealing individuals that they may be charged for murder if they supply an illegal substance and someone dies. Opponents of the proposition are citing potential fiscal fallout due to increase in both the counties and prison, state systems. But the proponents of this, which include the district attorneys, businesses, and other cities, are very much in support of this proposition. The fiscal impact, per the Legislative Analyst Office, believes that the fiscal impact of this will amount to the low tens of millions of dollars, which is about 0.5% of the state's total general fund. The city's legislative platform supports measures with strengthened law enforcement, and as such, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution for Prop 36. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Isaac. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Mayor. Isaac, thank you so much for that report. As I'm sure a few, my council, I think all of us, attended the chamber breakfast. We were privy to listening to our district attorney, Mike Kestrel, speak about this. I think it's a no-brainer. I say yes for sure on 36, and my husband being in law enforcement, I think that what was done in 14 was catastrophic, and I am ready to move forward with this as soon as my, rest of my colleagues have a moment to speak. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lavell.
Well, Prop 47 is basically the reason you see the YouTube videos of the smashing grabs. The, I, I hope it passes because there's about, I mean, to have a penalty again for doing things like that would be nice. The fiscal impact that you mentioned, I think would fail in comparison to the fiscal detriment it's caused the entire state. So that would be an interesting figure to see as well over the last 40, wouldn't 47 pass, 2014?
2014, yes.
Yeah, since then. So thank you for the presentation. Look forward to voting.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavell. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I have a quick question for you, if you could come up. He looked too comfortable. So I know the policy at your police department has always been, if it's a jailable offense, you take them to jail.
True.
But it's somewhat of a revolving door because of the seriousness of the crime that Props 47 created. Do you think that passing this is going to create less of a revolving door for your department?
I do. I know that the prisons are very empty right now, and the county jail is very full. So if this shifts some of those felonies back to the state prison, then yes, we'll be able to jail some of the folks that are doing some of the theft crimes that Councilmember Lavell referred to. Regardless, we book them. I realize they could be released within hours, that we don't run the jail, but they get booked. Everybody gets booked in Murrieta.
And if they're booked on a felony, do they still go to Coysbird?
They do. All of our bookings, misdemeanors and felony, go to Coysbird. More dangerous, very serious felonies, the jail will generally keep them, but those are few and far between. A lot of felonies get released as well.
They do, but under this, fewer would.
If we shift that population back to the state, so we know AB 109 has emptied our prisons, our prisons are half-full right now. So if, if 36 moves some of those crimes back to the state, gives us more room in our local jail, then yes, those people will be kept. The sheriff wants to keep them, but he has only so many beds.
And it is my, my understanding that, like a lot of things the state has done by shifting costs to counties and cities, that this Prop 47 back in the day was nothing more than being able to shift that cost to local jurisdictions and not have it on the state's budget. And this Prop 36 is going to shift it back to where it should be.
We think so. We hope so. There's a lot of other pieces in Prop 36, the fentanyl, some of the, actually, the care that will come to those people that have drug addiction, the homeless population that we're seeing, that's really all tied to Prop 47. So we think 36 will, will combat some of those things, too. But what you're saying, yes, will it shift it back to the state? We hope. We'll have to see how that works. It plays in conjunction with AB 109 as well.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Great. Bring it back for discussion. Seeing none, I have a motion from Councilmember DeForest and a second by MPT Warren. Please vote.
This motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Okay, moving on to item 15, establish a Los Alamos Hills Sports Park Phase II Subcommittee. Staff, any staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh.
Kimberly Ramirez will be presenting this item.
She walked all the way around.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. My name is Kimberly Ramirez, and I am the Deputy City Clerk. And the item before you is to establish a Los Alamos Hills Sports Park Phase II Subcommittee. And before I jump into going into the details of the subcommittee, I did want to go over briefly the ad hoc versus standing. I know you're aware of it, but it's always good conduct to provide a brief overview for not only your knowledge and for public. So ad hoc consists of membership of, is less than a quorum, which is very similar to standing as well, which also has less than a quorum. But the main differences include that the ad hoc is going to dissolve after a certain period of time, such as providing a recommendation to council. And this is also not subject to Brown Act, so it means that no agendas have to go out and no fun-associated postings as well. As for standing, this one does have a fixed schedule, and it is subject to the Brown Act, so think of it as a mini-city council meeting. And now to the fun stuff. So the Los Alamos Hills Sports Park Subcommittee was brought as a result of the last city council meeting, and since there has been various activities and discussions held by the city council, direction was provided to create a subcommittee that will provide direction and look at feasible alternatives. Based off of the direction and the discussion, the proposed purpose is to work with city staff to review the options and feasibilities of soccer fields and alternative city parks to provide a recommendation to the city council on the direction of the Los Alamos Hills Sports Park. And once you make a recommendation to the city council, this subcommittee will automatically sunset. At this time, is there any proposed changes to the name, type, or purpose as we have proposed currently?
Any council questions?
Seeing none.
All righty. And before I let you guys discuss the membership, I did want to note for the record that a handout was provided to the city council listing all the current assignments.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Rob Hawks.
Thank you, Mayor Stone and councilmembers. My name is Rob Hawks. I am a resident of Murrieta since 1998, and I'm here tonight as President of Murrieta Youth Soccer League and Murrieta Soccer Academy. Murrieta Soccer League, Youth Soccer League has been serving this community since 1993. I joined the board in 2002, becoming president in 2006. Our, our efforts to provide quality programs for the community has resulted in continuously growing both the recreational and the competitive programs to the extent that we have outgrown our current facilities. Since 2018, we have been working with city staff to develop a world-class soccer complex and remain fully supportive of this project. This complex, now scaled back, will serve as a place that supports our local athletes, students, and families with community-based activities and events. This complex will enable us to host soccer events that will bring tens of thousands of people to Murrieta, who will not only increase tax revenues, but will fill our hotels and restaurants. These events will include college showcases, state and national tournaments, U.S. soccer events, and conferences. With the right complex, we will double the size of our two existing tournaments, which currently bring 8,000 to 10,000 people a day, but need to be held at Galway Downs in Temecula. There simply is no place currently in Murrieta to handle these events. This complex has consistently generated huge interest in all levels of soccer and will enable us to continue building our boys' and girls' programs, which includes the highest level of youth soccer in the country and are a direct pathway to the national teams. To give you an idea of the impact of these programs, not only do we facilitate college for many players, we have players that are playing for national teams, professional academies, and in 2023 had our first Murrieta player sign a four-year contract with the L.A. Galaxy at age 16. The demand from our local talent is here, but these programs, these local players have no choice, but without these programs, these local players have no choice but to leave the area. Our purpose has always been to keep our players local, our local players local, and we already have this here in Murrieta. Unfortunately, due to the length of time that has passed, so has many of the tremendous opportunities we had lined up. European clubs coming to Murrieta during their team breaks, the very real prospect of a professional team playing in Murrieta. It was also not unrealistic to expect a national team to want to come to Murrieta to use the complex during the 2026 World Cup and 2028 Olympics in L.A. In fact, we've already received emails asking us for just such a place. We recognize that the complex cannot be built as originally designed, but the complex will still allow the events described. We understand the city cannot afford to build the soccer fields to meet the current demand or capture the potential of our efforts. The model we have presented can be successful and is our best foot forward to work with the city to address these issues, as well as pay the debt service. A few years back, the city paid a national consultant, SFA, I think was what they were called, and it was $50,000, to review this project, and the report overwhelmingly agreed that it is viable and needed. If I recall correctly, their conclusion was that this was a win-win for the city. Although seven years have passed, we remain committed and excited at the opportunities that continue to present themselves with the complex such as this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
That concludes public comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Council, we're going to bring it back for discussion at this time. I'm going to ask if there are any councilmembers that would like to sit on this ad hoc committee. Okay, Councilmember Holliday and Councilmember Lavell. Any discussion on this ad hoc committee? Seeing none?
I have a question. Can we take inquiries from the public for the committee? Like if we want, it's not just Mr. Holliday and myself bringing our thoughts. How does the public engage?
Madam City Attorney, is that possible?
You can have a public meeting.
Okay.
Then it would be.
It's not the subcommittee, correct?
Right, then it would need to be a notice public meeting. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. I have a motion from Councilmember, Mayor Protem Warren, and second from Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
I think I made an error. Can we do the motion and second again?
Yes, so we had a motion by MPT Warren and a second by Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you.
There we go.
There we go. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Fantastic. Moving on to governing body announcements. The governing body announcements are an opportunity for city council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements should not exceed two minutes, and the city clerk will use the computerized timer. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll defer to the next meeting. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Councilmember Lavell.
Can you let Mr. Holliday go first?
Okay. Councilmember Holliday.
What, do you want to copy me? Okay, here's the things that I went to that Councilmember Lavell did not go to. Just a couple I want to highlight. The list is on the website, if anyone wants to look at it. We went to the 9/11 tribute ceremony, which I must say, the chiefs delivered great speeches along with our mayor. Very well-attended event, and the points that were made by the chiefs were very much appreciated. I would encourage everyone in Murrieta each year to come out to that. It's just, it's a good remembrance of what we were like back then, united, I think, as Chief Malloy said, and in this day, when we seem to be very much divided. Be nice to get back to those times. And then we went to the Murrieta Chamber Awards Ceremony this last Saturday. A lot of, a lot of good recognition from a lot of good companies and individual. The person we lovingly refer to as the Train Lady won Volunteer of the Year Award, and she, Amy Edgeworth, yeah. And she was unable to attend, but she was, she was surprised that she even got the award. So those are the two that I want to highlight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Just in case John needs to cheat off of me, too.
Yep.
I had the, probably, I had the pleasure of attending the Murrieta Elementary School new classroom building ribbon-cutting. It was amazing. What a wonderful building. And they have the original school bell, and they rang it for the first time. It was, it was amazing. I attended the Children's Library Expansion fundraiser, Professional Women's Roundtable General Meeting. No, you were not there at that either. I attended the Murrieta Wildemar Chamber of Commerce mixer at Altura Credit. You didn't, no, you weren't there, so don't put that down. I attended the Murrieta Temecula Group. None of these he attended. Unity for, for Murrieta. I had the honor of attending the Murrieta Elementary School Presentation for Community Helper Day, and I got to tell five-year-olds what great, what a great thing it is to be in government in Murrieta, and they went right over their heads. The 9/11 tribute, thank you, Murrieta, for a wonderful tribute on, on such a solemn occasion. The networking breakfast was amazing with our DA. And you did go to this one. Murrieta Wildemar Chamber of Commerce Award Celebration was outstanding. That concludes my report.
Thank you, MPT Warren. Councilmember Lavell.
Thank you. I am now ready. Thank you for jogging memory. I did attend the Medical Leaders Lunch at Renaissance Assisted Living with Mr. Holliday. Had a great time, and from there, I also attended the Chamber Awards, as Ms. Warren referenced. Had a great time. The room was air-conditioned and very chilly, so it made a great night. And then lastly, the most memorable thing that I almost forgot is I went down to the border with Ms. Lori Stone here and Jessica Alexander from Temecula, Jen Wirsma from the school board of Temecula, right?
Yes.
And then Jessica, Jen, Lori, who was, there was a couple others. Lori probably remembers them. But we got to hear other electeds talk about the border, about the fentanyl issues, and our DA, Mike Kestrel, was down there as well. And it was very promising to hear how they were advocating for new laws and legislation that would give them more, more bite in the penalties for those types of crimes. Seems like we have a lot of momentum, a lot of great thoughts on ideas to make that problem start to get better, so I'm excited to see the progress to be made, and I appreciate the invite from Mayor Stone.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavell. Actually, it was an invitation from Congressman Darrell Ista. Yes, I knew that. You can review my governing body announcements on our website, but there are two topics I'd like to address, and I want to thank both of our chiefs for your speeches at 9/11. Thank you so much, especially Chief Conrad. I'm going to be, I'll miss those stories, so I think you need to pass it along to our next chief. Those stories remind us of the tragedy that did happen on 9/11, and as we discussed, while thousands of people had died that day, I think more have died from exposure to toxins from 9/11, and so they will always be in our hearts. And yes, it was, it was. And yes, it was very important that Councilmember Lavelle and I were at Congressman Ista's border hearing. I have not had a moment, which I will hopefully this weekend, to write up a summary of all the elected officials. We had the sheriff of Imperial County, besides the mayors from the cities that are affected by the people that are entering our country through Mexico. And I will tell you, there are very, very dangerous people that are entering our...entering into our country. But more importantly, the thing that shocked me was there are more than 300,000 children missing in our country today, and it's just devastating what is happening. So, with that, that concludes my governing body announcement, and thank you to my colleagues for your update. Now, we will move on to councilmember requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. Now is the time for councilmembers' requests or add or withdraw items for future agendas. There will be no discussion on the requests. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Are there any requests from my colleagues to bring forward an item for a future agenda? Seeing none, but I have two, always. Mr. Hayes was gracious enough to come here today to request us to reconsider the fees at the department, and so I'd like to agendize that for a future agenda, please.
I will definitely second that. I do have one quick question for the city attorney. That is something we can change without opening, like, a policy or diving into all the fees.
What fees were they?
The police office counter fees, I believe.
I'll have to look at what fees those are and how they're adopted.
Regardless, I'll second that discussion, and we can figure out where to go from there.
I need another.
I'd like to check with the city manager. Is that already in process?
Yes, we've been having conversations, and that would be part of the larger discussion if that's what the council desires.
Okay, fantastic. Great, thank you. I'll withdraw that. And then, I would like to also agendize a discussion on hate crimes with regards to religious churches and temples in our community. I know a few years ago, I brought forward a resolution declaring that hate crimes, we will not stand for that in our community, but we've had another incident at the Hindu temple here in Murrieta where perpetrators entered their temple and ruined and damaged ancient artifacts that could never, ever be replaced. And so, I'd like to bring forward that discussion on how to deal with it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, we have consensus. So, thank you, Madam City Clerk. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn our meeting, and thank you so much. Have a great rest of the week.